The flag of the United States there and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Let's start off with a roll call vote, make sure we have our board members present. Peter?
Here.
Ben?
Here.
Nicole?
Here.
Rocco?
Here.
Bob?
Here.
Joan?
Here.
Okay, we have a full board of seven tonight. Thanks, everyone. And our COVID statement, tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order 202.1, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow municipal board to convene a meeting by video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on the usual cable television channels. The recording of the meeting will be posted on the town website, and a written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. There has been a roll call of the board members, and there is a quorum present for this meeting. I have also confirmed with the Secretary that this meeting has been duly noted, and we have fulfilled our legal notice requirements by putting, posting a copy of the notice of the meeting on the town's webpage and on the town's bulletin board. We have emailed a copy of the notice to the media, and we have confirmation that the legal notices for the public hearings have been properly published. All right, thank you. First application up is Eastdale Village. And Jeff, are you out there somewhere?
I am. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening, members.
Good evening. Any brief overview, anything, any updates since last time?
So if I can start, yeah, I'll just share my screen and go over a little bit of where we are, if that's okay?
All right.
So just to really, I guess, kind of recap where we are. This 10th Amendment is expanding the residential uses on the site, and I have in front of you a rendering of the west side, rendering of the east side, expanding the residential uses by 27 units based on a six-dwelling unit per acre zoning through the incorporation of the adjacent 4.6-acre former industrial retro parcel into Eastdale. So that increases the number of dwelling units site-wide from 353 to 380. And there's also a request to add an additional 20 dwelling units above commercial. You'll recall, there's no zoning cap on dwelling units above the commercial, but the impacts are reviewed under SEACR, and so this will be an increase from 37 to 57 units above the commercial. And I just want to mention that these units above commercial have really been instrumental in the sale of the commercial development that we've seen here. They've allowed the owners to get additional income streams. That makes the two-to-three stories more affordable rather than a single-story building here, and that also brings the critical mass of people to Eastdale Village, to Eastdale Avenue, and so it really is, it really has been a very important part of the overall program. And then along with that, based on the demand, we're asking for an increase in commercial uses by 40,000 square feet. Again, there's no zoning cap in this zone on the amount of commercial space, but there are important ratios between the commercial and residential uses which have to be met, and of course, the SEACR impacts of the increase have to be analyzed, and that's what's been represented in the amended SEACR consistency document, the water, wastewater traffic, and SWIP studies that have been distributed to you and going to be held as a review. And that's, again, the kind of the sum of what's, of the whole application. I know we've been here for a while, sometimes I think our recap is... We've had minor updates since we last talked. One is in the central green space here, we now have a design for the playground behind the mail center, so that specific layout, which requires both site plan approval and building permit, has been incorporated into the plans. We've done some minor updates to buildings, both the A buildings, which are shown here, and the E buildings here. Again, minor foot here, foot there, stairway, and then as we were here last month talking about the lot launder vision between E4 and E5 buildings, that's been incorporated into the plans in front of you tonight. The other thing, and if you, we can talk about to whatever extent you want to, but you had asked us to provide you with an overlay of the changes over time since this is the 10th Amendment, and, you know, I went through the written narrative and provided that to you, and then had our engineer prepare this overlay of all the buildings, and I would tell you, I was surprised at how consistent everything has been over the last couple of years. I think the major changes were the medical office building got smaller here, it was originally a 30,000-foot building, it's down to 26,000, and then we changed what was the D building into the four commercial cottages here with the green out front. Those are the two big changes. Everything else, the buildings got, you know, foot bigger, foot smaller here and there, but again, remarkably consistent through the development. And so, you know, again, the 10, nine now, 10 amendments that have been in front of you have really been a result of the, some of the, or the many utility changes we've worked to do to make the site much more efficient, and all those little architectural changes of the commercial owners here, and again, make the Eastdale Avenue a successful commercial floor. So again, here to hopefully address any final SEACR comments you may have, and I'm here to answer any questions that the board may have tonight. Thank you.
All right, thanks for the overview. Jeff, start with Eric for his recommendation.
Hey. Yep. Let's see. We've received no additional comment from the New York State Department of Transportation, although we've reached out to them. You heard, we'll have the traffic consultant speak to those issues in just a moment, but in summary, based on their findings that recommended no further mitigation, council and staff have prepared an amended findings statement to consider all of the changes to the SEACR findings of March 2018 for the original approval through the present amendment. You have a draft of that in your packets, and staff is recommending that you consider a resolution to adopt, adopt that amended SEACR findings statement and to grant conditional amended site plan approval. There are a few comments remaining in the staff recommendation, and then you have some comments, I think, from the traffic consultant and possibly from the engineer. Alana, did you want to say anything regarding DOT, if you're there?
I am, Eric. Hi, good morning, good evening, everybody. Yes, as Eric had mentioned, we hadn't, we haven't heard back from DOT after their one email comment that they sent roughly a month ago. We have reached out multiple times and unfortunately just haven't heard back, but we do feel that the mitigation that had been implemented as part of the original FBIIS and findings statement is sufficient for the increased trips associated with this increased density on the site, so that's noted in your, in your package with your findings statement for tonight.
All right, thank you. So you were not able to touch base with them either, Eric?
No, I did not.
All right.
Did not reach out.
I believe Don is on the phone as well. Yep, that's what I was going to next. Any last engineering comments, Don, for this?
Nothing of any consequence.
All right, yep, we've covered the stormwater pond and such. This is on for...
Chairman, for just two housekeeping comments from planning. One is that, one of the staff comments, number, site plan number four, just invited the board if they had any further comment regarding the snow storage relief valve that was discussed at a previous meeting, whether the, the proposed mechanism to seek relief from the Director of Municipal Planning by the applicant if it was necessary, that's what the applicant proposed, the board can weigh in on that. Secondly, there was some recent comments from neighbors received about construction conditions out at the site. And I think those are pretty much covered by, you know, enforcement conditions on the plan is probably a matter of enforcement, but you may want to discuss with the applicant just so that the public is aware of what those measures are and how they're to be addressed, and perhaps if there's any mechanism, if people have concerns where they can get in touch either with the applicant or with the board.
Yep, did plan to do that. Thanks, Eric. This is on for public hearing, so I move, we open the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question by, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Is there anyone in the meeting tonight wish to comment on this application? Remember, if you're on your phone, you can do star six to unmute and talk, or raise your hand through the Zoom meeting. Take a second to look through.
I see that Mr. Martin is on the phone.
Yeah, hello, this is...
Mr. Martin, go ahead with your comments, I, we have your letter as well.
Brett Martin. Okay, well, I was concerned because last five months were the meetings I have been sending letters in and mentioning things that I thought were of importance to not just the developers and the owners, but to the general public and specifically the neighbors who are dealing with a number of issues. My most recent letter, I kind of summarized what has not been addressed over the last five months, and I added a couple of additional issues in my letter. Something came to my head yesterday, and the building inspector very graciously arrived on the scene, and some of the things that probably shouldn't have had to been pointed out by a neighbor, specifically myself, all of a sudden are happening the way they should have happened, and I've also heard from one of Mr. Kirchhoff's representatives today, and he assured me that they are going to be a little more cognizant of the neighbors and the noise and the dust, and mitigating all of the issues that seem to be ongoing, but maybe now are being addressed. So I don't feel like I should have to read that letter. I believe the board members through Carol Barone have received copies of that. But certainly, this is a public hearing, and the public has not heard about some of these issues, so I was just wondering if it would be appropriate for somebody in the board to maybe read that letter, or at least hit the bullet points, old issues and new issues? If so, I would think that'd be very helpful for the public to be aware of, and for all parties concerned, developers, owners, residents, et cetera, to kind of all be on the same page.
Sure thing, we'll try to take a look at these tonight as well as, and they're in the record. Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wish to comment on this application?
You can, if you're on the phone, you can use star six to unmute, or star nine to raise your hand, obviously if you're in the Zoom call, those controls are at the bottom of your screen. I'm not seeing anybody currently.
All right, I move that we close the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes 7-0. All right, we'll go around the board for comments, and we'll bring up some things. Start with Joan tonight.
Hi, I don't really have any comments except, I don't know, maybe now would be an opportunity for the applicant to address the neighbor's concerns in the letter. I mean, that would be my only issue that I would want to discuss.
Okay. Let's go around the board first, and then we'll get back to those issues. Ben?
I don't have any comments at this time.
All right, thanks. Bob?
Yeah, I just had a question, it wasn't stated, but the increase in, there's an increase in residential units and also residential over commercial. Does that affect your parking space requirements and snow removal? Are there any impacts to those plans? Or should there have been?
It did add more parking, I would let Jeff answer.
Would you like to answer now, or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, again, the, you broke up a little bit in the question, you're asking if there was an impact on the stormwater, was that the...
Additional parking added because of the new units and commercial space.
Was there additional parking added? Okay, yeah, I'm gonna share my screen again if I could.
And we have some land bank parking as well.
Right, so there were a couple of things that, on parking, number one, and we talked about this a meeting or two ago, that the board has, has the ability to establish appropriate parking in this zone, and we've been working with you over the last, over the last couple of years to make sure we're developing enough parking and not developing too much. In our original demand analysis, we had assumed that we needed two parking spaces per dwelling unit, and based on where we are now, with about a quarter of the units are filled, we are now applying a 1.8 parking spaces per dwelling unit, and believe it still gives us a adequate parking and not, and not overdevelop. So overall, what we've done on the west side and east side, I got the two parking numbers here, parking demand, we take a credit for shared parking between some of the non-residential and residential over the commercial parking, we've taken a credit of 10% of those, and end up with a shared parking demand number on each side, and that's really, then summarized down below. So what we end up with is a, is a total of 1,296 is in the demand, and parking provided us 1,229, so we're a little short. We have added 69 spaces in the, on the west side as a result of the changes in additional units, dwelling units on the west side, which we believe was adequate, but as discussed, we've also set aside almost half an acre that we've, kind of said that if we need to have more parking on the west side, even beyond the land bank parking, that these are the areas that we're gonna, we're gonna look to focus parking in, and, you know, the documents in front of you don't, don't analyze the, all of the impacts related to that parking, they don't, the SWIP doesn't look at what the stormwater impacts are, but we have done desktop review of those impacts and believe that the parking can be developed from those areas without the original impact, but again, we do have 69 more parking spaces and the ability to develop more should demand show we need it.
All right.
Okay. Yep, the other part of that was, is there any impact on the snow removal, where it's no storage space, is that increased because of the more residential, maybe it was in there, so I missed it.
Right. We have established snow storage areas, and I know the engineer has looked at them as well, the snow storage is, is one of those, one of those things you can, you can, you never know how much is going to snow, right? So you try to, try to find a happy medium towards additional snow storage areas with additional parking and not, so we've, the snow storage areas did not enlarge, our, our challenge will be to get the snow out of there, should there be heavier snow, get it out of there faster, and we believe, we believe they're big enough, and that's, again, why we're concerned, we think, you know, it has to get stored, you know, somewhere in some parking spaces for a few days while we're getting the snow out of there, we've, we've asked for that, for that relief. And I think the board has been cognizant of that being an issue, not here, but everywhere, but that's how we, again, would approach it, including the snow storage areas here on the sides.
Yep, and I have several around.
All right, thanks, thanks, Jeff.
Anything else, Bob?
Jeff, this is Eric Holman, can you just, the numbers that you just displayed in the tables, did that include or not include the land bank parking that's on the plan?
That did include the land bank parking. I can't remember off the top of my head, the number was in the land bank parking, but I, I believe there are 55 land bank parking spaces, and we increased the number of land bank parking spaces by 14.
Yeah, remember we asked for a layout of them, and you provided that last time?
Yes. Well, you asked for layouts on the, on these potential future areas, which are, again, over here and there, but the land bank parking of these, these gray shaded areas, which were always on the, on the plan.
Oh, okay, yeah, gotcha. All right.
Did add one additional land bank parking area down here somewhere, but yeah, but the main ones are right here.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Move on to Nicole?
This is Alana, if I could pick your brain for a second. The last time that we all met, we had talked about, you had talked about, you had some discussion with DOT about the increase of traffic at intersections, could you just elaborate that just a little bit of what you got from them?
So unfortunately, we really haven't had a chance to speak with DOT, we've reached out multiple times, but haven't received any response back. The only correspondence that we've had with them has been through that email that was provided, maybe a day or the day before the last planning board meeting, and in that email, DOT basically said that the increased number of units and the increased commercial space is going to increase traffic at the study intersections, which I think at this point has been well documented, and that there is the potential for these increased trips to have a slightly increased delays when compared to the original findings statement. But unfortunately, we haven't heard back from the department with regards to anything else, like I said, we've, we've reached out multiple times, but what we do believe is that the mitigation measures that were put in place as part of the original evaluation, part of the original SEACR process are sufficient to accommodate the kind of small number of trips associated with this increase at the site itself.
And Nicole, if I could just point out one other thing, one reason why we may not have heard back from DOT is that originally they thought there was a 15-second delay in a certain intersection, and Alana corrected that it was only a five-second delay, so they may, that may have alleviated a number of their concerns, because 15 seconds is certainly more significant than five. And also, to keep in mind that the current modeling that Alana has done doesn't take into account the adaptive control measures, and once those are implemented, it's anticipated that traffic will increase, the benefit, traffic will flow more smoothly.
And we don't know when they're going to be doing that, right?
They're fully installed, and the applicant has done all that it is required to do, but the last we heard, DOT was having an issue with its software supplier and had to do additional work on its end in order to make them implemented.
Okay.
As, as an update, if I could jump in, the vendor, Highway Tech, was on-site this week and told one of the, one of the construction staff on-site that they were energizing the, the adaptive signal controllers, and they would be online, were available to be online this week, so that still, that still leaves DOT to finally throw the switch, but we understand that the vendor's work was, they were here and should have been completed this week.
Okay.
I think I also recall in a discussion I had with one of the DOT staffers in August, that they were not likely to turn on the adapters once they were operational, once DOT was prepared to do it, that they were not going to turn them on before school started.
Okay, well, school started now, so, be a good time. All right, thank you, everyone.
All right, thanks, Nicole. Yeah, and those should help, I think you, Alana had said it's about a 10% increase in benefit.
That's correct, that's the documentation, about 10%.
All right. Peter?
Just a couple of things. One, in response to Bob's comment about the parking, originally, the county expressed concern that we had excess, an excess amount of parking on this site, they had expressed a lot of concern about that. We're, now you're providing 2.0 spaces per unit, it's been reduced to 1.8 spaces per unit, it's, doesn't seem like a significant amount, actually, it's 10% of the parking that was available, which is a significant number. And I just want to say, going forward, you know, we're gonna want to keep an eye, if that drops below 1.8, you know, I think there's something we should pay close attention to. The other thing is, a procedural question, if, after we accept the findings, DOT does make a response that challenges, for some reason, the findings, where do we go from there?
Lisa, do you have a...
So if DOT, the only response that DOT would make that would impact the findings would be one that additional mitigation is required, and so if there were that case, and if, I mean, the findings are the planning board's document, so once DOT made that recommendation, they would have to evaluate the, whether, what DOT is recommending in terms of additional mitigation. If the, if the planning board felt that whatever the facts that DOT supplied that make, that warrant the additional mitigation, we would do amended findings if needed.
Okay.
Thanks.
Great. Anything else, Peter?
No.
All right, and Rocco?
I simply echo what Joan had said earlier, I think it would be appropriate for the applicant to address the comments from Mr. Martin.
Yep, I'll get to that then, if nothing else. I had a couple of comments, see a lot of stuff's built on the west side there, you're still planning to put that path down from the nursing home?
So the, yeah, right, I'm gonna pause here. Probably not, given the, given the state of affairs with the nursing home. The commitment always was, we were gonna build the path on our property, up to the property line, and the nursing home wasn't gonna connect that to their, to their parking lot because they wanted a way for their staff to, to get down. They, I think the nursing home industry is in serious trouble, and they don't have money for a project like that. The, the reality is, there is sidewalk access from the nursing home down to the, the project down Concord Villas Drive, there's existing, you know, concrete sidewalk there, that isn't our sidewalk network, so it, our, you know, our, we don't think it makes sense to build a, to build... to build a, a sidewalk into the middle of a field that ends nowhere. And so we're still working with, uh, with the nursing home to see what the final outcome of that is. Uh, but right now, that's kind of where we are and, and we'll come, you know, we'll come back to you if, if, um, if we can't get any further and see how, um,
Okay. But they also, they have that alternate method as well to
Yes.
to walk down. All right, and, uh, and that's all I had other than Mr. Martin's letter. So summarize a couple of the issues. I think you, he'd asked again about the, uh, the path, the exit from Darrell Place. I believe the last meeting you did say you were planning to still have that in plans, right?
Yeah, can I, again, if I can share my screen and talk about that one for a second?
Sure. And while it's up there, you can discuss, you know, when the, when any of the screening, the plantings and stuff will occur.
Sure. Uh, so this is, uh, from the, from the plans. And, um, what you see here on the, uh, the right side, this is, this is Darrell Lane and this is the, in the, uh, in the project, this is, uh, part of my drive. So this is the, this is the Darrell Place connector, uh, that runs from, uh, from the cul-de-sac at Darrell Lane into, into the project here.
Right.
It is one way into the project and that was discussed, um, with the neighbors and with the board, um, initially, uh, but so people wouldn't use this, wouldn't start to use Darrell Lane as a, as a shortcut.
Right.
Residents here wouldn't start to shortcut out there. So it's one way this way. And there is a, yeah, there's a gate here. The gate is automated. If you're driving from Darrell Place into the site, it automatically comes up. Uh, but it, it does not come up if you approach, approach the gate from the, uh, from the project side. So, so it's always been in the plans this way. This is the, uh, this is how it's, uh, how it's been represented. Um, again, stop sign one way, do not enter signs, uh, here to keep, uh, people from accidentally getting into the site. Um, the, uh, the trigger for this, and this is, uh, note twenty-eight on sheet, uh, OP one, um, and Eric and I actually worked pretty hard on this, uh, on the, the, to make sure that it's built and, but to make sure that it's built in a, in a way that makes sense. So we are required to have it fully operational, uh, with access to the signalized intersection that, uh, and that's, that which is down at the Eastdale Avenue, uh, prior to both of the following conditions having been met. One, issuance of a building permit for the hundred and ninety-fifth residential unit and two, issuance of a CBO for the second building containing residential use on the east side of four forty-four. So, uh, when those, before we can get either of the, get, get those two things in place, we have to have the connector built. One of our concerns was that we needed to make sure we had the, you know, the red, it doesn't do any good to build the connector if you don't actually have a road for it to connect to. Uh, so if necessary, we would have a gravel road, uh, for some connector portions, again, subject to approval by the town engineer. And we could be in that condition for up to two years. Uh, and then the other issue was that, um, we're connecting the Phillips property to the, uh, uh, to the onsite sewer system here. Network has to be done before we impact, uh, the Phillips, uh,
Yep.
subsurface disposal system, their subject system, uh, which is in the area of the connector road. So there are some triggers in there that take place. And this, you know, this, we're talking about two years here, but based on their, our build out and where we are right now, I mean, we aren't, we aren't two years out from, uh, from having the full roads. And so I think this will, uh, happen, um, it may happen in twenty twenty-one. That would be my, my best guess, based on the, uh, based on the, uh, the, what's the expected on the, on the east side.
It's good overall, yeah. Overall, it's been moving, construction's been moving faster than, uh, initially anticipated. So that's goodness for the neighbors as well.
Right, right.
And, uh, you know, the screening, all those plantings and stuff along to, for the Darrell Place homes, that'll, that'll happen. Glenn?
Yes, um, where I can find the right, uh, sheet here. So this is the land, no, this is, yes, this is the landscape plan. Um, and, uh, you can see, um, Mr. Martin's house is, uh, is here. And, uh, there's a landscape buffer all along the, uh, the side of our property and, uh, and the, the rear yard of the, of the Darrell Place residents. Um, the, the issue that is happening is that there are utilities that are being placed right now along this line. And there's a swale that has to be developed, uh, back, uh, back here. That work has to be completed before we can, uh, can put the landscaping down. And it's just because it, it, the utilities have to go in first.
Makes sense.
I, I, yeah, I don't, based on where we are in the year and the, and the utility work that's going on, I don't anticipate being able to get these plantings done. I, I, I think the, I think utility work's going to take us past the planting season of this fall. So they can't go in until next spring.
Okay. So, so that, and then the, uh, you know, noise and dust that's currently happening, he says, he said you're starting to address that, but, uh, is that because you're doing some utilities in that area now or?
Well, right. And I think certainly the noise, uh, the noise has picked up, um, uh, because we're now working over there. We started, uh, putting these facilities on, um, just this, uh, just this month. And, um, uh, so there's, uh, it is a lot noisier, but again, most of that, that heavy work will, will just proceed down the line. And dust control as well. And, uh, I, uh, I, I agree and don't think we were as careful on dust control as, uh, as we should have been or supposed to be. And so we've, we've, you know, tried to, 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 um, remedy that situation. And, uh, that's, it's just, uh, we've, we've got to get better at it.
Okay. Yeah, he said, uh, you're starting to look at that now, which is good. And the last item that he's brought up, which is concerning, I guess, you know, we look at this for, if there's blasting concern, but he said some of the vibrations could potentially cause, uh, some cracking. Is there anybody looking into that from?
So a couple of things. One is there's, you know, we never blasted on the other side, even though we had, um, there was rock identified, um, up here behind the medical office building. Uh, we, uh, we hammered that rock out. We did not blast. Um, but they, but, but with the rock, we had some of the residences, particularly the McCaffrey House and the Agro House, this is just off the corner here, sit on that rock. And so they, uh, they had the potential to feel those vibrations much, uh, much more. There is no evidence of rock, uh, on this side at all.
Okay.
And so although I'm certain, uh, Mr. Martin, uh, would feel vibration of, of the trucks traveling, that's really a different, uh, um, a different issue than, than, than blasting. Having said that, uh, and, and if Mr. Martin is still on the phone, I think he'll acknowledge, um, uh, he, he's not home now. I think you're, I think he's away, but, uh, um, we would, um, uh, we offered to come in and, and photo and, and, uh, so we would have a record of, uh, of, of any potential impacts going forward here on, on his house. And so that, that offer remains open, uh, to, just to confirm if there, uh, if there are any, any issues. But again, without the, without blasting, um,
Okay. So some, so no blasting anticipated at least, but the, the heavy equipment could, uh, vibrate, make some vibrations. So appreciate you trying to stay on top of that.
Sure.
All right, any other, uh, comments from board members at this time? Seeing none, I guess we're ready for a motion.
Did you close the public hearing? Excuse me. Did you close the public hearing, Carl?
Oh, sorry. I thought I did.
Yes, you did.
Yes.
Yep. Thank you.
Before we went around the board. Go ahead.
I move that the, I move the planning board adopt a resolution adapting an amended seeker statement of findings for the McDonald Heights Town Center project dated September seventeen twenty twenty.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for the Eastdale Village Tenth Amendment Site Plan subject to the following. Respond to comments of the reviewing departments and agencies and set responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included but not limited to the following one through nine.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion passes seven zero. All right?
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, we'll see you next time.
Well, I'm still here a little later on for, uh, architectural review.
And you still have a condition to meet to get a variance as well.
Yes, yes.
It's back here. Oh, before we move forward, I forgot to mention at the beginning of the meeting, we have, uh, two of the public hearings are just going to be adjourned tonight. That'll be Locust Grove Crossings and the Stewart's on Route Nine. There will be no, uh,
Those will probably both be adjourned to the October meeting.
Right, both, both the October meeting.
All right, we'll get to that.
Which I believe, that's what I was looking up today. I think it's October fifteenth. All right. Second up on the agenda is Foman Wash at, uh, nineteen forty-two South Road. A different Foman Wash from last time. Who's here representing that tonight?
Hi, good evening, Chairman. Jay Geising, Warrior Architects.
Hey, Jay.
How is everybody? Um, I'm here with Gary Bayright from Foman Wash and correct, we're not here to talk tonight about the, uh, the Coyote Grill property, Foman Wash, but instead we're planning a renovation project at the Foman Wash a little further south, down by the Poughkeepsie Galleria.
Yep.
And I'm going to share my screen here so I can show you some plans.
Yep, go ahead.
See that?
Yep.
Okay. We got, so to give you a little area perspective here, um, you can see the, the Foman Wash here on the northbound side of Route Nine and you can see the Galleria right across the street. And here is our existing site plan with Route Nine out on the right side of the page there. And as you can see, we have the existing gas canopy and the convenience store at the front of the building. The car wash bay on the north side of the building, down over here. And the existing oil change facility here on the south side of the building towards the rear. So our proposal here, uh, before you tonight is to remove the oil change facility from the building and convert that space to office and storage areas for the Foman Wash. And as part of that, we're going to be removing this small addition that's out at the rear corner, this outside of the building. So as you can see here, our proposed plan, um, you see the modifications. By removing that addition, uh, this allows us to reconfigure the car wash queuing lanes. And also, um, we're going to, but we're going to incorporate two queuing lanes there. It's very similar to what we did at the car wash, if you recall, at the Coyote Grill site.
Yep.
One lane will be for the unlimited car wash customers and then the, the other lane for the single purchase car washes. So the south side driveway then will be converted to one way only for the car wash entrance. And if you recall the existing site plan, the oil change bays exited out onto this, uh, driveway and it was two ways. So that will really help us improve the circulation on the site as that, um, interaction there was also, was often confusing for some of the customers who were arriving, choosing whether they needed to go to the oil change or to the car wash.
Yep.
And you can also see outside of the former car wash base, we're going to be adding some planted islands and there'll be another planted island here at the south corner of the building. I believe Eric, um, suggested we make this planted island a little bit bigger, which we're happy to take a look at.
Yep.
And then the existing parking area to the rear of the building and then the entrance to the car wash and the bypass driveway on the north side of the building, uh, will be unchanged. So other than that, we're really not proposing any other modifications to the overall site plan. We did receive some minor comments from, um, planning staff and from some of the departments, which we're certainly happy to address. And I look forward to any questions the, the board might have tonight. And thank you for the opportunity for, to share this with you.
All right, thanks, Jay. Looks pretty straightforward. Uh, let's go to Eric for his recommendation.
Let's see, do you have the department's recommendation? Um, this is a type two action under seeker, so no seeker environmental review is required, uh, because of its limited, small nature. And we just had a couple of comments, as Jay mentioned, I'm glad to hear they're, uh, well, it's a little more landscaping that'll keep the traffic flowing smoothly. So we're recommending a conditional approval by the board. Um, and then you may choose whether or not to engage in architectural review for the, you may want to waive it or look at it for, um, the modified building and, uh, the cash machine.
Yep. He has a picture of it here. All right, uh, Don, anything from engineering on this one?
Sorry, it took me a minute to get unmuted. Um, we were just looking for, the main thing is looking for an existing condition demo plans. There's a lot of stuff on the drawings, so we would prefer to see that type of plan just to make things a little clearer, but other than that, not much.
Okay. And if they do some additional landscaping, that will reduce the impervious as well. All right. Uh, this is on for a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing for this project?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Is there anyone on the meeting tonight which to comment on this application? If you're on the phone, star six to unmute or raise your hand with a zoom. And we have a few people in, in attendance tonight as well. Not seeing any hands raised. Again, star six if you're on the phone to unmute yourself, star nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone. All right, nothing showing up. So I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. All right, let's go around the board for comments on this one. Peter?
Uh, just two comments. One, that, you know, the existing property looks like it's been fairly well maintained. Uh, you know, I looked at the short environmental assessment form, there are no red flags there. I mean, it looks good.
All right, thank you. Ben?
I, I like it. I think it's going to relieve any congestion that there might be and improve the flow. So I think it's a good thing.
All right. And Nicole?
Um, my questions were about the office space and then about the parking spots. How many parking spots do you have on that, um, lot right now?
Uh, we have an excess of what is required and it would just take me a second to find the exact count, but.
I know you're required as.
I'm sorry, you broke up a little bit.
You're, you're required thirty-nine spaces. I'm just wondering how many you have.
Oh, it's, it's on our plan chart here. One second. We have in the, in the area of about fifty-five.
Okay. Um, with the office space going in, do you know how many people will be working in that office?
Well, right now it's planned to be pretty sparse because of social distancing, so there's not going to be a large number of people here. It'll probably be, I think it's going to be a significant reduction from the oil change staff that was here. So, um, and there, there is adequate parking. I think the zoning looks at your parking here as just a gross, um, space per square footage of building, whichever is in there. So, um, again, we have, we do have a good we have, we do have a good amount of parking, and we will have less people here than, than there is formerly with the oil change.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, good to make sure you're adding office space that there's parking to accommodate it. Rocco?
No, I don't have any additional, it looks good, I use that car wash there quite a bit, and this will be a good improvement.
Bob?
Yeah, no, it looks good, but I have one problem, and that is, I'm gonna have to find another place to get my oil changed and inspections done, so...
Well, the Foman Wash in Fishkill still is in operation for oil changes.
Yeah, I did use that a couple of weeks back, when I found out that they weren't doing inspections, but not doing oil changes, I guess I could go to Fishkill too.
Gotta travel further, yep, I use that myself. On occasion, let's see, anything from you, Joan?
I just wanted to confirm that the new queue lane, is that the same size as the existing queue lane, you're not going further out with the addition of another lane?
No, that's correct, so, with the removal of the small addition that was on the back of the building, that lets us accommodate the two lanes there, and we are not going further back from the existing curb line right now.
Okay, thank you, that was my only comment.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joan. I agree with Eric that you should, you know, work with him to increase the landscaped island a little bit, you know, less, a little less pervious, make it look nicer. And I think the two lanes, you know, it's definitely, you get backed out onto Route Nine sometimes, so the two lanes will help that situation. I did want to ask you where the, trying to remember where the trash is and how the garbage trucks access it.
Yeah, that's on the north side of the building, right, it's kind of, just past the entrance to the car wash, I can share the screen one more time and show you that if you'd like.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so the trash is right in here.
Yep. How do the trucks get there, Jay?
Oh, they run, they would typically run around in off-hours, but that's part of the reason we left an opening here, because the truck does not, is not gonna want to go through where the cash kiosk is, or the cashier kiosk, so he'll sneak through here and be able to access the dumpster as he does today, but, you know, we are gonna enlarge this island, but we want to leave an opening partially for that reason, to allow him to get through.
Okay, yep, so don't enlarge it too much. Got it. I'll work with, you know, Eric on that.
Will do.
I'm sure he'll make sure that works correctly. All right, any further comments from the board? Ready to start with a seeker motion?
I move that the planning board determine that the proposed activity is a type-two action and is not subject to a seeker review pursuant to six NYCRR six-one-seven dot five C seven of the seeker regulations.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for the Foman Wash nineteen forty-two South Road site plan subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies and set responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of the following, one through D.
Seven D, yep. And add number eight, the discussion we had on the landscaped island, if you... Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. Can you just say what you're planning for architectural changes to the building when you remove that?
Sure, the addition was put on the building and the, you know, that was against the existing wall of the building, so it will remain as the original finish and match, you know, the rest of the sides of the building, there'll be a little patching there, but there won't be any changes to the color or the materials, that'll all be uniform, and then, we're gonna obviously remove the oil bay doors and install some, just some glass and aluminum storefront windows there, and again, there won't be any other changes to the facade, the doors are glass now, and they'll, you know, continue with that look.
Okay. It's good that the original wall was intact with that, when that addition was put on. This is the, and the cashier station I see is...
Yes, the same cashier station that we looked at for the Coyote site, it's got a little roof canopy, and there is a photo of it there in the plan set.
All right, what kind of signups do you have for, for separating the two lanes? Because you said one is for monthly customers and one's for...
It was up on the screen.
Yeah, there was, there was a sign there, I can show you again one time quickly.
Just wanted to see the...
It'll look similar to this, it's just showing the customer, you know, the unlimited sign, and the single wash purchase sign, and then there's signage also on that canopy, the canopy itself.
Okay, got it.
Yep.
All right, thanks, any comments on the architecture from board members? Seeing that, I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. All right, thanks Jay. Good luck with the...
Thanks, everyone, have a good night.
Bye-bye.
Next up, eight-three Stewart Shop at twenty-two forty-five South Road, to be adjourned. I move that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan? Oh, Joan, I didn't hear. Oh.
Aye, sorry.
Yeah, playing with the mute and unmute, and myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. The mute and unmute's like when I use the video camera and hit record, and it's usually not recording. Hit it too many times. All right, next up's Arlington Farms, Malabar Realty. Seeker review. Who's on, representing that tonight? Oh, he's here presenting.
Karen Hagstrom, Stanger Roberts Davis and Diamond.
All right.
Have a seat, and we can, if you're talking to the microphone, then we'll...
Turn them on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good now? Karen Hagstrom, Stanger Roberts Davis and Diamond.
All right.
On behalf of the applicant.
And I'm Rich Tompkins, Mori Architects.
All right. Say your piece about what...
So I sent a letter to the town attorney, Lisa Cobb, which she said she distributed to the board, which we would like to be part of the record this evening, just basically outlining the scope of the public hearing, because as you're aware, this project was the subject of previous site plan conditional approval, also a special use permit, it was under the jurisdiction of the ZBA at that time, but that was also, and it only through litigation did the approvals expire, or that your town attorney has issued an opinion. So, to, in order to get the project going again, because the applicant and the town did prevail after many years of litigation, which just ended in two thousand and nineteen, we've reapplied for the same, it's the same project, so, the law that I've set forth and to your attorney as well, is just that this board and the ZBA are both bound by the previous determinations, and only if there's a change, a material change, the word material's important, in circumstances would that be, you know, the subject of this public hearing, so just, I'd like the board to just limit the scope to any, anything that somebody thinks is a material change since the prior approvals were made.
All right. So basically, basically bringing the same plan forward again.
Yes. And Rich Tompkins, who's here, was the architect originally and now.
Yeah, remember, we went through some architecture changes to make it look nicer.
We did, yeah. Would you like me to kind of give an overview of the project again, just to kind of remind you?
Just briefly, it's been a while, and we have some, we have some new board members as well, since then, so...
So, I'm not sure, can you see my screen?
We will be able to see if you share your screen?
I'm just...
Oh, you're in there.
Ooh, how's this work?
No, I don't think so.
I can go to archaic.
Yeah, let's go, let's go that way.
Feels a little...
I think it'll mess things up.
Let's go to the video tape.
This is the old, old-fashioned, so it might be a little tough to see here, but we're looking at a thirty-four, let me start with, there are three existing buildings on the site, there's the existing gas station building, there's an existing apartment building, and then there is a small trailer that was used for auto sales. So, our proposal is to remove all of the existing structures, we're looking at constructing a thirty-four hundred square foot convenience store, and then we do have eight gas pumps that would be basically in the same location that the existing gas station currently is located. So, obviously, some other site amenities, you know, dumpster enclosure, parking, updating landscaping, new lights, new signage, and basically creating a new, a new look for the entire site, as well as a new look, obviously, for the building upgrade, upgrade to the site.
Yeah, remember, we had reduced the number of gas pumps from the original proposal, as well as...
We did, yeah.
The size of the building.
Again, that goes back to very early meetings, but originally, we had twelve, we reduced to eight, I believe it was a forty-two hundred square foot building originally, we're down to thirty-four hundred now, so we have, there was also some other things, we originally had some spaces designated in the front parking area for U-Haul rentals, things like that, so again, we reduced some of the uses... Correct, yeah, so we reduced some of the things that were going on on the site as well.
And the parcels were merged, there was originally two parcels.
Correct, yeah, there was originally two parcels, one for the residential piece and one for the commercial piece, those have been, again, in the previous application, were merged to become one lot.
And the billboard's going away.
The billboards are gone, yes.
And I'd also just respectfully request that the public hearing be closed after this evening, if we're able to get through.
We'll see. We go to Eric for his recommendations tonight?
Sure. This is the board's first meeting after having circulated for lead agency, and know that all the previous involved agencies were, received it for the, this new two thousand and twenty application, nobody has objected. For the staff review, we basically gave you the, the review and comments of the planning department that were incorporated as conditions of approval in two thousand and fifteen, at the time the planning board approved it, and then we've updated it for the current submittal and changes indicated by the application and the plans, and so we've distinguished our comments in that fashion. So it addresses the issue, it brings up the same issues that were addressed at the time of approval in two thousand and fifteen, and then modified them according to the changes. So with that said, we thought there should be a chance for the board to consider the changes since then, and to consider any public comment that might come out of the public hearing on it, and then if it was, and then go forwards from there, depending on an applicant's follow-up submittal at a future meeting. With that said, we're recommending that the board open the public hearing and adjourn it, and then to defer the application.
If I could just make one point, we, this basically is the previous application, there were no modifications, most of the changes were to address the previous meeting's comments, so there's not a change necessarily from the originally approved project.
We just advanced further.
Correct, yeah, basically addressing the comments.
Well, we, and now we've circulated for lead agency, so there's comments, additional comments to address, and that's likely why we're deferring here.
Yeah.
Tonight.
Carl, I'll just clarify, my point was that the comments were modified, not just from changes in the plans, but also for some changes in, in circumstances since two thousand and fifteen as well, with the passage of time.
Correct, I get, you said it a lot better than I did, Eric, thank you.
All right, thanks Eric, let me, let me hit up Don for any comments from engineering perspective.
We have probably two or three that are bigger than others, we just want to get the notes correct for the, for the work near the town road, that's one thing, we wanted to make sure that all of the tanks on the site were removed and formally closed, and just wanted to make sure on some of the, the lighting, the lighting, that all of the standards are met, we don't think they are right now, so those are probably the three biggest things.
All right, yep, we don't want any light spillage and stuff to neighbors as well. Okay, thanks, Don. Before we go around the board, this is on for a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing to the...
Please, just before you do that, did Lisa have any thoughts about the comments about the scope of the public hearing, or any, you know, for the board's benefit?
All right.
So it is correct that the board did approve this the last time around, and so what the board is looking for, comments from the public, would be changes to circumstances that might affect the board's approval one way or the other. Obviously, there have been no changes to the plans, so, you know, I'm assuming that the public that opposed it the last time will still oppose it this time, but in terms of the benefit to the board, it would be helpful if the public could explain any changes that they believe have occurred since the last time that make this approval no longer advisable, if any.
All right, so it's just the passage of time basically that impacted. All right, I move we open the public hearing?
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Right, is there anyone, let's start with, is there anyone?
We have a list, I think, right?
Oh, we had a list.
And actually, if you guys wouldn't mind stepping down from there, so people can come up to the microphone, that would be great.
All right, we have some sign-ins from, in the meeting hall tonight, and then we'll start with that, and then move on to anyone that's on the Zoom call.
And can I just note, the previous conditional site plan approval did note that the tanks were removed, it's in the, in the site plan approval.
Okay, just want to make sure everything's remediated.
It does mention that.
No contaminated soils, because it wasn't, I mean, it was, there's a gas station and service station for decades, and... service station for decades, and so. Eric Cole?
Good, I'm the attorney representative of the neighbors, I'd like to let a resident speak first.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Start with Peter Mack then?
And while Peter's coming up to the microphone, I do see some folks with their hands raised on Zoom call, we will get to you as well, so please be patient.
Yep, we have four people on, in the actual room here.
Yes, so if you can have a seat, and so you speak into the microphone, that would be great.
Good evening, my name's Peter Mack, two oh six over Rocker Road in the town of Akipsi. My family's been a forty-nine year resident of this address. I'm a Colonel in the US Army, currently serving over at West Point. One of the things I learned early on in my army career is leadership, especially with regards to a good character, integrity, and honor. I will say Malabar Realty from as early as two thousand fifteen has been a bad neighbor, no desire to do the right thing. And his right to develop the property ends where it adversely affects the neighbors, with noise and light pollution, public safety, environmental hazards. I have a FOIA request, and I only got a year's worth from the town of Akipsi, but I'd like to share that with you, because I think it's important. I want to start off with April two thousand fifteen, an unsafe building investigation report from Tim Sicles, the building inspector, and highlight some things here, and I'm going to share all of this with you, and I'm going to leave it with you as well. What Tim Sicles says, this structure is currently vacant and has not been occupied for more than a year, so this was back in, you know, two thousand fifteen. The front lot adjacent to Duchess Turnpike has been excavated and left in an unstable and unsafe condition. The fence enclosure is inadequate to prevent entry to unauthorized persons. The excavated area is eroding uncontrollably. The hole has literally hundreds to thousands of gallons of stagnant standing water. Apparently, the contaminated soil that was removed to correct the registered spill has found its way back into the western side of the hole. I think I've been in contact with Wendy Rosenbach of the DEC Region Three about this, that there are still environmental hazards there. The structure is an attractive nuisance to minor children, vagrants, and transients. I have building inspection reports dated May first, eighth, thirteen, fifteen, eighteen of two thousand fifteen, all with the same stuff. No plan on file, fence unsecured, no compliance with orders to remedy. May eighteenth, the building department to the town board said, the orders to remedy for this property are now at a date. The owner has failed to supply the retired plan as required under the orders to remedy. The structure is still unsafe, the owner has failed to do anything to make it safe. It is recommended to continue further actions on part of the town. There is a order, notice of public hearings, signed by Tagtan Creedie, dated May twenty-ninth, recommending the town board take action, and then, you know, levy, you know, against the owner of the premise to correct the actions.
Just reminding you, that's the three minute warning.
I have, this is a, this is a, a letter from the engineer and land surveying, KC Engineering and Land Surveying, from Ernest Martin, he's a professional engineer, to Mr. Jose. Material that was used for backfilling sandy material was simply backdumped into the hole with no provisions for testing or compaction. I can go on, I have more resolutions, you're asking, you're saying, the property is dangerous, unsafe, and dilapidated, recommending that the town board take action. Electrical service termination request brought on by the town board, you, again, you, January two thousand sixteen, no resolution, no action taken, not in compliance, none of the remaining conditions that make this site dangerous, unsafe, and dilapidated have been addressed. It said, the only dangerous condition on the property that has minimally been corrected is filling the large hole in front of the structure minimally corrected. I have more and more of these inspection reports, I have appearance tickets issued in two thousand sixteen. I have, you know, a complaint by the building inspector to Malabar Realty, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, for the five tickets, two thousand oh nine, ten, eleven, not in compliance. Two thousand twelve, the weeds were cut, they're not cut again, you know, but they were in compliance temporarily. It said, I have, you know, all of these things that I talked about, weeds, bladed property, combustibles, vacant structures, and hazards, in two thousand sixteen still hold true today. I'm going to leave you with some photos, blight, holes in the glass, blight, vandals taking action against the property, which were brought up in two thousand fifteen, it's two thousand twenty, these were taken on July fourth, still blight. The hole that was minimally filled is still minimally filled, blight. Hazards, you know, dry lumber on the property, combustibles, still there. The architect said there were, the billboards were gone, they are not, I just drove by there today, there is a billboard that's still in place.
They'll be gone with the, with the plan, is what.
In tropical storm Isaiah, I said there were, actually were hazards, unsecure portions of the building blowing across the street, you'll see the structure there of that apartment building blown across the street.
We know, I mean, there have been some asbestos abatement and such, but can you, can you leave those with Carol and she'll make sure the board gets to look at them?
Just in closing, is, is this the sign of responsible behavior? Is this the sign of conscientious stewardship? At some point, somebody has to take responsibility. I see Jose has money for lawyers and architects, but he doesn't have money for, you know, simple lawn maintenance? I, I go to this site, you know, and I see it day by day, it's not been maintained. You know, do we trust this person to build something as safety and environmentally sensitive as a gas station in close proximity to a residential district? Right across the street, there is a family of four, with two young girls. What if there's a spill? Who's going to claim responsibility? Who's responsible here? Is it going to be an LLC, is it the town board, is it the town? There's been a history, five years of not taking any action. Someone has to do something. Thank you for your time.
All right, thanks for your comments. Next up is James Graves, is it?
My name's Jim Graves, I live at two fifteen over Rocker Road, a New York State Code Enforcement Officer, Certified Electrical Inspector. First off, Peter didn't mention this signed letter to the building department from Mr. Jose, August twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen, of all his plans to take proper actions and maintain the properties. I'll leave that with you. I'll try to read this as fast as I can, these are important. Malabar's deficient application frequently references the plans and variances from its two thousand fifteen application. Those plans, the plans from them have expired due to Mr. Jose's negligence. There's no need to mention them, there's no need to mention those plans. It only has confusion, possibly trickery, to try to fool the general public into believing something that doesn't apply. The application for the plans we're discussing today are new, and all the upcoming decisions need to be, be based solely on the two thousand twenty application. Whatever happened in two thousand fifteen is irrelevant to today's process. Why is there a mention of a forty-five hundred square foot building and twelve gas dispensers? These drawings never made it before the planning board for their approval. Absolutely nothing from that application applies at this point, and any reference to it should be removed from the application. This is not a rubber stamp process, too many things have changed since the last application. With all the changes that have recently taken place in Arlington area, Eastdale Town Center, with its ever continuing expansion of their site plans, assumed to be Arlington Town Center, there are one hundred or so apartments at La Grange Farms being built just on the other side of the bridge in La Grange and Degarmo Road. The Glens, a large development of sixty-plus single-family homes being built less than a mile away from Overlook, from Over Rocker Road. How can a partial traffic study presented before the board in two thousand fifteen, prior to the exploding growth in the area, be of any use in making a sound environmental decision regarding the impacts of this project today? Last month, Eastdale's, and again, tonight, own representative speaking before the board stating that their enlarged project is going to cause additional traffic constraints at the Degarmo Road Duchess Turnpike intersection. Where is this new study that Mr. Jose's attorney said they would provide? I just heard a lot of from Eastdale, again, speak of the DOT, DOT, and in conjunction with the, the traffic at all of these intersections. DOT hasn't gotten back to it. Additionally, all the other documents provided in regards to the seeker are dated two thousand fifteen and need to be updated. This community has changed significantly over the, over the last five years, and the information Malabar needs to present here have to take into consideration these changes. The planning board must also take into account all the areas of environmental concern. What will the lighting impacts be in the community? There are no landscape buffers being provided in an attempt to reduce the glare of the lighting on the property, properties. These buffers and the five hundred foot restriction on the building motor vehicle service facility from a residential neighborhood, which requires a use variance, this wasn't applied for. These variances were put in place to protect us from the nuisances associated with this shoehorn project. Where are the DOT traffic control devices at the entrances and exits on the plans? Does anyone look at or have any concern over the turning radius on the plans for the gas delivery vehicles, the other large trucks that will be entering and exiting onto the already congested Route forty-four corridor? How are these large vehicles going to be able to move within the lot with the cars at the dispensers, in the parking spaces, or at the vacuums? What's laid out on the plan is simply unrealistic, it won't actually work in real life. I have a few pictures, these are from my backyard, can I bring them up?
Yeah, well, in the end, you can give them to Carol, and she'll pass, she'll distribute them to the whole board, okay?
Those pictures were taken from my backyard. Picture number one and two are from my patio. There was already an eight foot stockade fencing separating my neighbor Linda Wright's property from the Malabars. When Mr. Jose cuts all the trees down, removes the old farmhouse and Vic's garage, there will be nothing blocking my view of the proposed canopy, of the proposed canopy lights, the canopy lights from the mobile station on forty-four, two illuminated monuments signs, and Walgreens. There's nothing that a few large evergreen trees at the proposed station wouldn't block. The tall fence doesn't protect my family from these nuisances, landscape buffers, we need them. Picture number three, I'm standing across the street at the edge of the road, in front of Amy and Matt's front yard, where their two young girls play. I have mentioned that there were approximately, have I mentioned that there are approximately nineteen school age children that live in or near the five hundred foot zone around the proposed facility? When every tree you can see in the picture is removed, and those two buildings are gone, what did you just do? What did you just open up Matt and Amy's front yard to? Everything that will happen on these properties, Duchess, and Duchess Turnpike, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, is that fair to them? Wouldn't landscape buffers prevent this impact on their quality of life? They moved across the street from an old multifamily farmhouse, they never expected to have a gas station in their front yard? Picture four, standing at the edge of my front yard, when these trees and buildings behind it are gone, it will open up a wonderful view, wonderful view of two gas station canopies, Route forty-four and Walgreens. Is that what the residents on Over Rocker Road deserve? The zoning, the zoning code outlines the buffers that should be put in place on a project of this size to protect our neighborhood from all of this, I believe it's twenty-five foot green landscape buffer. Where are those buffers? Where are the landscape buffers we rightly deserve if you choose to let Mr. Jose build this gas station? How can it be in the discretion of board to not see the necessity in providing the landscape buffers on this project? If buffers can't be provided, isn't the project too big for the lot? Isn't it apparent that the town board unanimously voted for the five hundred, isn't it apparent why the, the town board unanimously voted for a five hundred foot rule of a gas station from residential district? These areas of concern also impacted by the number and size of the requested variances. I'm sure there will be more variances needed before we finish. The planning board cannot, planning board cannot ignore the impacts of the required substantial variances on our community character, aesthetic resources, natural resources, other health, and along with the pedestrian and vehicular traffic. We have the Duchess Rail Trail trailhead on Over Rocker Road, it is already dangerous for us to ride our bikes from our homes to it. Imagine how much worse it'll be with the traffic exiting from this gas station, traveling down the local road in an effort to bypass the congestion on Duchess Turnpike. The traffic increase won't just affect Over Rocker Road, it will also increase the traffic on Overlook and Old Degarmo Roads, where drivers using them, it's a cusp in an effort to bypass the traffic signal at the purple, purple parlor car wash intersection. So allowing an exit from the proposed high volume motor vehicle service facility is irresponsible, it's a tragedy, an injury, a fatality just waiting to happen. You know, this type of thing never happens in your neighborhood until the day it happens in your neighborhood. I know this firsthand, my little sister was four years old when a vehicle speeding seventy miles an hour through the village of Statsburg plowed into her, throwing her on a hundred and ninety feet from where she was hit. She laid in a coma three days before my parents had to make the hardest decision they ever had to make in their life, to take the child off of life support. I don't ever want to see another family ever have to go through this type of tragedy. But allowing the facility of this state should be built in a residential neighborhood significantly increases the chances of this type of event happening. So at this point, why are we rushing to push this thing through? Over the last five years, Mr. Jose, and Mr. Jose alone, is the one who has allowed these properties to get to this point of decay. I have more pictures for you, I think Peter may have already given some of them to you. These were taken last weekend. Mr. Jose is solely responsible for the deplorable conditions and the unsightfulness at the end of Over Rocker Road. He has had five years to show his good faith to the town of Akipsi and its residents. Mr. Jose, to this day, still, has not complied with the orders and remembrories that are over five years old. Over this time, he could have showed us that he is a responsible property owner and procured the demolition permit and removed the dilapidated buildings that have become an eyesore he created. If he couldn't afford to pay a contractor to raise the buildings, he could have purchased a sledgehammer and wrecking bar, dismantled the buildings himself, and brought the debris to debris to the town dump sites, free of charge. After all the disrespect and inconsideration he has shown to all of us, Mr. Jose continually thumbed his nose at every town agency, board, and department he's interacted with over the last five years, wasting town resources. How could anyone even consider allowing Mr. Jose to build a gas station in the middle of a residential neighborhood? The plans that were submitted are deficient, I've only touched on some of the most obvious flaws in them, the drawings do not address, to protect the neighborhood children. Late last year, the town approached the state DOT about a no left turn from Duchess Turnpike on to Over Rocker Road. I'm going to say that again, last year, late last year, the town board approached state DOT about making a no left-hand turn off of forty-four on the Over Rocker Road. The state agreed, the state agreed, but the public hearing couldn't be held due to COVID. And in the meantime, the state contacted town and asked them to see if there was something they could, that could be implemented to slow the traffic down. At this point, that's at a standstill because of this project. The town has decided that putting this project in is more important than the safety of our kids. There's a children's park just down the street. This proposed high volume gas station will directly increase the safety hazards that are already present there. Have this, have this gas station developer go back, redraw his plans to include all the safety measures necessary, including landscape buffer, remove the exit on the Over Rock, Over Rocker Road, or restrict the right-hand turn on the Over Rocker Road. Mr. Jose should do his due diligence, comply with the zoning codes, and build a responsible project. The planning board should do everything in its power to protect our residential neighborhoods from this type of overdevelopment. Thank you.
All right, thanks, appreciate your comments, sorry for your loss. This is, this is a new board, and we'll be, we'll be looking at making sure these issues are looked at.
May I speak?
I remember there's a, remember there was a fence involved in the original plan, but we need to look at it in more detail, the landscape buffering, et cetera. Let's see, let's move on to.
May I speak?
In a few moments, but there's other people who are ahead of you, Linda.
Linda Wright is next.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Linda Wright, I live at two seventeen over Rocker Road, which is right next door, and from what I understand, they want to build, they want to demolish the building, the trees, everything within the fences, and that is my buffer, our buffer to our neighborhood of the noise and traffic from Route forty-four. If they put in this gas station, it has to be at least five hundred feet from my resident, not twenty-five feet, which is right on top of me. I want landscape buffers, I want trees. I want landscape buffers, I want trees. I don't want a gas station next door to me because it's going to bring all the bright lights on if they're working 24 hours. I'm going to have the bright lights into my house. We're going to have all the noise, the smell of the gasoline, increased traffic. God forbid that there's a spillage, gasoline or oil or gas problem. You know, what happens? I don't know if it's going to leak into my yard and cause a problem. I don't want to get cancer or have any problems. I, Roy Stangle, lived at the house previously, and I, unfortunately, he passed away, and I'm taking care of it and I'm living there. And it's a beautiful house, it's a beautiful neighborhood, very quiet and well taken care of. But if this lot, if the house and the trees and everything is cleared off, we're just gonna, neighborhood's gonna be destroyed. And there's something else I want to say. One second. I don't understand how you can break a town, how they can break a town code by putting in a gas station next to my house when the code says it can't be within 500 feet of a resident, a residential property. Vic's Garage has been there for seven years. So how, after all this time, can the town justify putting a gas station next to my house? It doesn't make any sense to me. I'm afraid of a gas station and oil pollution that will affect me and all the neighbors. Like I said, it's a very quiet neighborhood, and if the house and the trees, which is our current buffer for the noise and the trucks and everything on 44, if they're taken all down, it's just going to be noisy and we're going to be affected by all the fire trucks, ambulances, and all the huge trucks that travel on 44. Currently, we don't hear that as much. And I just don't want to degrade the neighborhood. It hurts for me to see the neighborhood get destroyed because of someone wants to build a gas station. I have problems with all the vines and all the sumac trees that grow through the fence because they don't maintain the property. They don't cut the grass. It was a foot and a half, two feet tall during the summer. So that becomes a problem for me, even though I have a big fence, a high fence there. They are, who knows if there's snakes or mice or whatever varmints live in that property. I just, please don't let them destroy our quiet neighborhood and please do the right thing for us.
All right, thanks for your comments. And then there was Eric Cole.
Well, again, if you would please, if residents are like to improve, so do, I'd like to...
Okay, so we have a couple people with their hands raised. Somebody is labeled as iPhone 323913. So if that person wants to go ahead, tell us who you are and...
Yes, David Robinson. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, thank you.
I'm currently working on finding a story on Southgate, and I want to speak about the Malabar project tonight. How many gas stations enough? The town board parcel saying gas station should not be within 500 feet of a home. There's no way we need another gas station, less than 100 feet from these residents from Vic, the old Vic's Garage. Up and route, down Route 9, all you see are gas stations. Can we do any better? The landowner may have the rights, but this project is way out of bounds with two men. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. There's a Saxon Miller Jones with the hand raised. Yep.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Hello, my name is Saxon Miller Jones. Thank you so much to the members of the board and thank you to the city of Arlington and Poughkeepsie for your time.
If you could speak right into the microphone, Mr. Miller Jones, could you speak right into the microphone so everyone can hear you, please?
Yes, yes, can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Hello, my name is Saxon Miller Jones. Thank you so much to the members of the board and thank you to the city of Arlington for your time. I'm here on behalf of my neighbors and to my neighborhood. My husband and I purchased our first home here three months ago at 31 Overlook Road. This is an amazing place to live. People genuinely care for one another. Neighbors look out for each other. Just yesterday, someone gave us some fresh tomatoes from their garden. And when we first moved in, they baked us a welcome-to-the-neighborhood cake. We love visiting Eastdale Town Center, and Crafted Cup has quickly become our favorite coffee shop. All in all, we feel very blessed to have landed in such an inclusive and inspiring town. The proposed gas station has the potential to drastically disrupt our quiet little community, along with creating major additional traffic along our neighborhood. People are already using Overlook Road to bypass traffic along 44, and I worry that the addition of this gas station will only further this problem. Please reconsider this notion, and I hope you will vote to not allow this development to move further into our neighborhood. We do not need another gas station, and I'm here today to stand with my new neighbors and my friends to strongly stand against this proposal. I implore you to do the same.
All right, thanks for your comments. I know there was somebody, Linda, I believe it was, who asked to speak earlier. You're muted, Linda, if you want to, yep.
Okay, well, here I go again. I've been at this for quite a while. I've lived here since 1971, when that farmhouse was Vic's garage and it was a repair place with a couple of pumps. I mean, I don't even know when he put the pumps in, but basically. So what the town is allowing Jose to do is to put a grandfather in something that is not nearly what was there before. You need eight variances and a special use permit to shoehorn this huge gas station convenience store, which needs two acres and 2.8 acres, and that includes knocking down the farmhouse. I've repeated this before. Your law says no gas station should be built within 500 feet of a residential area. There's 25 homes, we signed a petition, the town ignored it. The current owner, Jimmy Greaves, has said has been so neglectful and irresponsible and for the safety and upkeep of this property. Several orders to remedy this, the town has not enforced, and he will not be a good business owner or neighbor, considering his past behavior. Lots of development area has increased, which of course, the traffic is crazy now. This will just make it so much worse. He also neglected to renew his plans on getting a building permit to build on the site. Therefore, he cannot use the fence that there was a fuel dispensing station here before. He can't claim a continuous use on the property. So like Jimmy says, he has to start over. And by the way, like I said, this new plan nowhere resembles the old repair garage with a couple of pumps. And I don't know how the town of Poughkeepsie can possibly allow this to happen. And also, we would ask for no exit onto Over Rocker Road. And again, this is hopefully, maybe, why not, doesn't he just build a convenience store, something smaller that will accommodate this lot? And I just don't understand why the town of Poughkeepsie cannot follow their own zoning laws. I don't understand it. It's supposed to be a government of the people, by the people, and for the people, not of the money, by the money, and for the money. Please, do the right thing this time, you have a chance. The old administration, I don't know what their agenda was, I'm pushing this through. It was obvious to me, it was, they had decided it from the get-go. I was so naive when I first went to zoning board meetings. And now, like I said, I'm totally aware that they were going to do this regardless of what we, our concerns were. So please do the right thing. No gas station. I understand it's a business lot, I understand it's commercial, and something has to be placed there, but it should be something appropriate, the right size. And again, there's already another gas station right across the street, and quite frankly, what kind of knucklehead planning is this for the planning department to allow two gas stations, both actually within 500 feet of a residential area? The other one's already built. This one, you have a chance to stop. Please follow your zoning laws. Why else did you put them on the books? Please protect us, and thank you very much for listening to me.
All right, thanks for your comments, Linda. Anyone else on the Zoom meeting? Again, if you are on the phone, you can use star six to unmute yourself. Someone's raising their hand, okay. Yep, now you gotta unmute yourself there.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can. Who's it? Who's this?
Can you see us?
Yes, we hear you. Can you, who's this?
Okay, this is Amy Hobson Aguirre at 208 Over Rocker Road, and my property is adjacent to this project. And like I said at the last town hall meeting, I'm really not happy about this. I have two children, and I'm just beside myself with how the town could possibly do this to people within so many feet that have families. You know, put yourself in other people's shoes. And would you like a gas station adjacent from your home, or perhaps if you have grandchildren adjacent to their homes? Can you see us at all?
No, we don't see you. We don't see you, but yeah, I looked up, I see where your house is.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this public hearing? Again, if you're on a phone, you can use star six to unmute yourself, star nine to raise your hand. If you're on the Zoom, you can just do that from your screen. I am not seeing anybody else. Looks like you're up.
All right, good evening, board. I'm Eric Cole, I'm an associate of Keen &amp; Bean. I'm representing Mr. Jim Greaves of 215 Over Rocker Road. You just spoke passionately, might I add. And before I begin, I had two procedural questions. The materials seem to recommend that this public hearing be adjourned to November, is that correct?
October or November, we're gonna figure that out.
I was gonna suggest November. I see 11 different sets of comments that the applicant has to address. It's just hard for residents to have to come at a 5:00 meeting, just they see it adjourned another month, and it seems like a waste of municipal resources. But I'll leave it up to your sound discretion. My other question was, the applicant's attorney spoke about a letter that was submitted to the planning board, and I was wondering if a copy could be provided to my office. I think Ms. Brown has my email address, if that's allowed.
Hey, Eric, this is Lisa. I'll email you a copy.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Okay, and if you'll indulge me, I probably need like four to five minutes. Okay. It is apparent from the applicant's submission and his attorney's statements tonight that they just want this board and the ZBA to rubber stamp the plans and act as if this is still 2015. This is not Back to the Future. We are five years removed from the prior application's approvals, and they chose to let them lapse due to the applicant's inaction. The applicant does not have vested rights here. A lot has changed in five years. This board is required to look at this as a new application that has no current use. All review should be without reference to what occurred five years ago, or to the fact that the lot was previously a service station that has since been abandoned. None of their plans should reference prior approvals that have elapsed or proposals like the truck rental that are no longer part of the project. The project still requires answers from the applicant so the town can complete its review. The applicant has failed to provide a traffic study, examined the potential impacts from new projects constructed since 2015, examined the potential impacts from new projects being proposed in the area, advised if it needs a variance due to its failure to comply with the town's lighting code. There was also discrepancy as to the lot size, the subject property, well, we're not really sure what the size of the property is. The applicant's submission states the property is 0.81 acres. Partial access says it's 0.71 acres. And the applicant's pending tax grievance against the town has the property at 0.77 acres. Perhaps the property has changed in size over the last five years. I am confident when the town staff, this board, the residents, and our office review the plans, we will find more deficiencies. This project is not ready for a hearing, secret determination or review, or any action by the ZBA. Let's take the time to review this correctly. We are also concerned that the applicant chose not to disclose the need for a variance from the two-acre lot size requirement for motor vehicle service facilities. It did not disclose this need when the application was before the town in 2015, even though this was passed in 2013, nor in its new application. In accordance with Town Code Section 210-35E, the minimum lot size for a gas station in the B-H District is two acres. Regardless of the size of the lot, which does appear to morph in order to fit the applicant's current need, a variance of over 50% is needed from the two-acre lot size requirement. This coupled with the need for a 355-foot variance from the town requirement in Code Section 210-90E of a 500-foot buffer between gas stations and residential property, which would allow this project to be within the ridiculous distance of 145 feet of residential property. Makes even more apparent, it makes it even more apparent that this is an inappropriate site for this project than it was five years ago. We have heard testimony from residents and neighbors about the condition the applicant has left the property in since obtaining approvals in 2015. Is this really someone the town wants operating a gas station? A gas station within 145 feet of residential property? The town review memorandum appears to rely on the prior 2015 secret determination and expired conditional site plan approval, and what I can only imagine is an effort to push this project through despite valid concerns of neighbors. However, this is comparing apples to oranges, as the neighborhood has substantially changed. The planning board must conduct a new and independent CICR site plan and special permit review, not taking into account old reports and stale information relied upon in 2015. Further, any argument that the proposed site plan represents a substantially similar use compared to prior uses is immaterial. The prior gas station existed on the property since the 1930s. At that time, the two-acre lot size requirement and the 500-foot buffer rule were not in existence. In fact, the town was not developing according to any sustainable land use plan at all. The zoning code was enacted to protect citizens moving forward. And here we have a great opportunity to correct the hazardous use, one that is detrimental to the nearby residents and to the community at large, that existed on this land over five years ago. And I thank you for your time, and I'd like to introduce my client's consultant, Mr. Nat Parish, he's on the Zoom. He's under Warner, you might have a hard time unmuting, if you could unmute him possibly?
I'll do my best.
Under Warner?
Warner.
Warner, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Thank you.
V. Warner.
V. Warner, yep.
He's talking, he doesn't... Warner, the gentleman.
Yeah, yeah, no, I see who he is. I'm trying to unmute him. But, there we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, yep.
Thank you. My name is Nat Parish, Nathaniel Parish officially. I'm retained by the same client as Attorney Cole who just spoke. I've been asked by my client to review their planning, zoning, and environmental issues that apply to this project, this application. My professional resume and contact information is in the record, as I appeared before your board before. I'd like to focus on a number of the glaring deficiencies in the process today, but given the timeframe, I'm gonna focus on just one of them, which I think is the highly important and in terms of sequence should be looked at now. and in terms of sequence should be looked at now. The proposed gas station, as has been discussed here by many people, residents and Eric Cole, is a permitted, is not a permitted use, because it grossly violates the 500-foot requirement. That's clear, and it can't be disputed. Very simple, it is not a permitted use. Thus, a variance is required, because this violates the code, and it can't be considered at all. All of the other issues are important, but it can't be considered at all, because it doesn't, it isn't a permitted use. And that, but this violation also, the permitted use violation, is very different from the other variances that are required, all of the dimensional setback and so on, list of variances, those are all important, but the permitted use issue differentiates it. Why? Because the state law until 1996 said variances are variances, there's no difference between which kind they are. But in 1996, the state very, very specifically created two possible variances, area variances and use variances. And that's in the state law, and use variances are what is needed to be looked at in terms of permitting a use that's not otherwise permitted by the zoning code. That's very clear. Distinction's important, why? Because they're very different criteria to be considered for the two types of uses. And variant, no doubt, use variances would be considered in a more severe way than would be a slight variation of the setback requirement, which can be 19 feet, it's 18 feet. Those are minor area variances, but the use variance is very, very specific in terms of what its requirements are, and your board has to recognize that and must establish that this gas station application will require consideration by the ZBA as a use variance. And that kind of creates a procedural dilemma, but that can be dealt with. Certainly, if the planning board or the applicant is not certain about this requirement, can now apply to the ZBA for an interpretation. But what it can't do, what your board can't do, is totally ignore the issue. If you decide that you cannot interpret it, surely the planning board can ask the ZBA to provide an interpretation. But the undertaking of the rest of the review becomes kind of moot unless you recognize that one of the actions that SEQA needs to be looking at is a use variance for this site. And that puts the planning board in kind of an awkward position, because they're gonna have to decide, hey, this is a use variance, and if it's a use variance, the ZBA has jurisdiction there, and maybe it won't be allowed at all. There's a procedural way of getting around that, I'll get into that in the memo, I know I have a time limit. I'll be discussing, in any event, this and other issues in the written comments that I'll be submitting to your board subsequent to this hearing.
Yeah, you can always submit anything in writing. I encourage everyone to do that. All right, thanks for your comments. Is there anyone else?
Again, if you're on the phone, it would be star six to unmute, star nine to raise your hand. If you're on Zoom, you would just hit the bottom of the screen there. Not seeing anyone. No, not seeing anybody.
All right, what's the deadline for the October, it's the middle?
Monday.
Yeah, yeah, let's go with November then. I move we adjourn the hearing to, the public hearing to November 19th, 2020.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Adjourned to November 19th. Let's go around the board for comments at this time. Start with Peter.
I don't have any comment at this time.
All right, Ben?
I just have a question. I know it says there's eight pumps, it's two islands, are these actual pumps or dispensers?
Hold on one second, we'll have the applicant come to the microphone.
There's actually four pumps with eight dispensers.
Okay.
Four pumps with eight dispensers, okay. Thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Ben. Nicole?
Yep, I had one question. Has a demo permit been achieved yet? Have you received a demo permit for those buildings that are unsafe on the property, need to come down?
I do not know the answer to that. I know that they have started some of the asbestos abatement, and I'm not sure if that would have required the demo permit.
I believe Eric, you can answer this.
Okay, maybe they can't get it until that's finished.
Yeah.
But I thought that was finished.
Eric, do you have any update on the asbestos removal?
I can speak to some of that if you like.
Okay.
I believe the asbestos abatement has been completed, and the town has documentation that that's done. However, at this juncture, because there is an active application, we do have the issue of SEQA segmentation if the building were to be taken down during this process. So while other site cleaning could go up, I'm not sure that a, we'd have to look at whether a demolition permit could be issued. I know that it was applied for, and we're checking on the status of it with the town.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Anything else, Nicole? No. Rocco?
No comment at this time.
Bob?
Nothing from me at this time.
And Joan?
Nothing from me at this time, thank you.
All right, it leaves me, and the neighbors chimed in some different things, so we do have to make sure we take a look at fencing and landscaping and such, that was, there's some on the previous plans, but I have to take a closer look at it again. And do you know, do you know what he's predicting for hours of operation? I don't believe it was planned to be a 24-hour operation, but...
I don't think it was a 24-hour operation, no. There was a period of time.
To recall, but I can't remember if it went to 10 or 11 or... All right, well, we'll be looking to get that information.
It is on the plan.
Okay, we'll look at that. All right, that's all I had right now. Continue to look and have them address our comments. And ready for the motion?
I move that the planning board defer action on this application and direct the applicant to respond in writing to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, included but not limited to the following, 1 through 11.
And 11 includes the planning board's comments tonight. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you for your time.
Next up on the agenda is 11 Wiltsey Lane subdivision. Who's on representing Wiltsey tonight?
I am, Michelle Zerfus with Berger Engineering.
Okay, I'm Michelle.
And this will be, we were at, saw you last month.
Yep, any changes since then? I think we're...
What was that?
Has there been any changes since your presentation last time? I think we were concerned about site distance and...
Right, we prepared the site distance drawing. I did it.
Michelle, you trying to share your screen?
Trying to share my screen.
Okay.
Nope, there it goes.
Okay, that's the subdivision.
Okay.
Grab the right line.
Michelle, you still there?
Yeah, I'm still here.
If we see the screen now, do you want to tell us? Now we don't.
Okay.
The site distances were not a problem.
All right. You can grade it in such a way. Let me go to Eric for some recommendation?
Sure. The plans we revised, they do provide additional profiles for site distance, a couple of other change, minor changes. We're comfortable that the SEQA issues are adequately addressed, if the planning boards are in agreement. We have a couple of questions about some details for the site easement, which we would recommend making conditions of approval for review by staff and the town engineer. Otherwise, we're recommending that the public hearing be open and closed. We've provided the board with a SEQA negative declaration and a resolution for conditional minor subdivision approval.
All right, thanks, Eric. Don, I noticed from Steve Phillips here, what say you?
Don, are you there? Oh, maybe... That is his cell number at the bottom, right?
I don't believe so.
Oh.
We lost him.
I don't think that's his phone number, it ends, he has a seven in the last three digits.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
We have lost him, all right, we'll take a look. He's gonna make sure that the site distance is good with the grading. I know there's some, you know, just out looking at the site myself, it's got some issues looking at it, at the current plan, but there's some brush and things that need to be removed as part of the construction. Let's go around the board for comments then. Start with Joan this time?
Hi there, I don't really have any comments, except I noticed in one of the plans, in the middle of the driveway, there's a boulder there. Do you expect that that's gonna be easily removed, or do you anticipate blasting?
That's actually already been removed, they've worked around, because that's on the first driveway.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Which is under construction, so they've either pulled it, were able to pull it, or push it out of the way, or filled over the top of it.
Oh, okay, so it's already been taken care of? Yeah. Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks, Joan. Bob?
I don't have anything at this time.
All right, Rocco?
Okay, I was trying to unmute, I don't have any comments at this time.
All right, thanks, Rocco. And Nicole?
Nothing, thank you.
Ben?
Michelle said there's no site distance problems, so I guess it's okay.
All right, and Peter?
I'm good.
Yep, likewise, site distance was remain concern, and it looks like that's a conditional approval to make sure that gets addressed. Yep, I was about to do that. Just noticed it. And move we open the public hearing for this project?
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Anyone on the call tonight wish to comment on this project?
If you're on the phone, you can use star...
Yes, can I make a comment?
Oh, yes. Tell us who you are first.
My name is Linda Mack, I spoke, had spoken earlier. So you all are obviously still on the, like, you're, you listen to us like you really care, but you all apparently are going to try to go ahead and proceed with this ridiculous project. All I can say is shame on you, and I hope you can sleep well at night. I'm sorry, but I cannot believe that after all of these concerns and legal issues, and actually zoning codes, you are still planning on going ahead on doing this. You, so why do we have...
Excuse me, is this about the 11 Wiltsey Lane project?
No, this isn't about...
Okay, the public hearing was closed.
Okay, sorry. But anyway, I'm sorry, but I cannot believe that you people can sleep at night. Thank you very much.
Yep, that, that hearing is adjourned to November.
Oh, yes, it's not closed, correct. Adjourned to November, sorry.
So you'll have another opportunity. Anyone on for, anyone else for 11 Wiltsey Lane?
Star six to unmute if you're on the phone, star nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone, or just on your Zoom.
Seeing that, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Think we've all had our say, so I guess we're ready to move forward with motions.
Okay.
I move that the planning board as an involved agency for an uncourted SEQA review of an enlisted action determined that the 11 Wiltsey Lane Lot 55 subdivision action would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the SEQA negative declaration dated September 17th, 2020.
Second.
Moved in seconded for SEQA, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional minor subdivision approval for the 11 Wiltsey Lane Lot 55 minor subdivision application, subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of, but not limited to, the following 1 through 7.
Second.
Moved in seconded to grant conditional. Called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. All right, thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Take care. Next up, Dutch Restage Inventory Parking. Is that Bill on for this?
Yep, I'm here.
Hey, Bill.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can now.
Evening.
Let's see. Briefly, I want to say what you've changed, it looks like you've clearly identified the different phases.
Yep, following the last meeting, we made some minor changes to the plans, which mostly involved showing the entire fence along the property line to be constructed in Phase One, as well as extending the trees along the property borders, with the homeowner in the back all the way along the property line as well for Phase One. So in Phase One, all the landscaping, screening, and the fencing will be put along the entire western back property line where the garage is, and then around the corner and up along the side to the back.
All right.
Those were the majority of the changes, and that... That was, those were the majority of the changes and that was just a lot of pre-work in the plans to show that. Other than that, there has been something that's come up with the applicant. You know, as they're currently doing the construction, which was part of the original approval, you know, they've been continuing with that construction to get it done before the winter. And then the changes that were incorporated into this plan will be incorporated into the work as they complete it over the next month or two, once, once this plan is revised. And in doing so, the applicant would like to take off the security lighting for phase one because the existing lighting for the existing parking lot, there's enough residual lighting in this area that he no longer feels it's necessary to add additional lighting for phase one. The lighting in phase two continue to be shown the way it is on the plan, but again, it's just a matter of not putting in the lighting that we originally proposed on phase one. And I'm going to try and share my screen, I do have two pictures that were taken at 8:15 when it was completely dark on Tuesday night, just to show the board the lighting that's in this area that's from the existing parking lot. And then, once the trees, you know, and I also want to say, once all the trees are put back in place, the landscaping as proposed, that'll also provide screening and so forth through the lighting. Let's try and share my screen here. So the, the picture that's on the left of the screen is at the common driveway looking to the south.
Yep.
Where that garage is existing.
Right.
And the area that, of the parking lot that's shown there, that's currently under construction, is the area which is phase one. As you can see, there's, there's lighting in this area. And he's not looking to add anymore.
Okay.
And if you look at the right of the screen, that's standing at the garage looking back at the shared driveway, looking north. So I did want to provide some pictures to the board to support not putting in any additional lighting above what's existing now. So I just wanted to make that request to the board and provide the pictures to show that there is adequate lighting in that area.
All right.
And again, this is vehicle storage. It's not an area where the customers are going to go look at cars. You know, if anybody's looking to purchase a car in the evening hours, you know, where it's dark, especially in the winter, those cars would be brought to the front of the dealership by personnel.
Yeah, you don't want to, don't want to over, overlight things anyway.
Right, so.
Not needed, that's good.
So that's, that's where I'm at, those were the changes and that's the, a new request that actually just developed this past week.
All right, that'll be great. Kirsten? Your recommendation?
Yeah, so thanks Bill for going through that. Yeah, it was Tuesday afternoon that we got the update about the lighting, but as Carl, as you mentioned, I'm kind of in agreement that less lighting, the better. I think what's there appears to be sufficient, it's meeting current lighting codes. And I already had a discussion with Bill that as long as the, you know, proposed landscaping and screening and buffering that was going in is going to be a part of phase one. I, I didn't have a particular issue with, with the plans. We'll just make sure that whatever is actually signed when a final submission comes in reflects the changes. Because we don't have a current plan of the exact lighting.
Be a condition.
So staff will just be checking for that. So the, the project's on for a public hearing this evening. We're recommending that you open and close it. We are also recommending the adoption of a seeker resolution and adopting a resolution to grant conditional site plan approval.
All right, thanks Kirsten. See if Don, Don back out?
Don is back.
Back in there and, any comments on this project, Don?
No, we only have one left and it's insignificant.
All right. It's been here a few times and we've looked at it quite a bit, so. Let's, I move we open the public hearing for this project?
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Is there anyone in the audience tonight wish to comment on the Duchess Dodge project?
Again, star six to unmute, star nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone. If you're on Zoom, just go to the bottom of your screen. Not seeing anything. Oh wait, I'm sorry, oh Eric Coleman raised his hand?
Yes, he did.
Why?
You have a comment Eric?
Maybe he was trying to tell us he was leaving, I never. I think it might have been an error when he muted himself recently.
Yep.
Okay.
That's what it looks like.
All right, very good.
All right, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, let's go around the board, any final thoughts on this project, Peter?
My only question is with regard to the change in the lighting. Is there an engineering standard for that type of application? I mean, normally we get like a photometric plan where we have, we can gauge, you know, what's sufficient lighting for, for a specific purpose. We're just looking at a photograph here and it's being represented, that looks okay. My question is, is there an engineering standard that we can hang our hat on rather than just say, you know, hey, that looks good?
Well, there's a, a photometric plan was provided for the, the originally proposed lighting. And in essence, that was more lighting now than what is being proposed and it currently meets the code standard, I think it's like point one foot candles at the property line. Bill, you might have more information than that, but I, that's what I got.
If he has more information, it would be helpful. Rather than just guessing.
Well, I could tell you that, you know, looking at that, you know, from my experience, that we're over, you know, a minimum, a minimal amount of lighting up the security. There's no, as far as I know, there's no specific minimum for something like that. But if we need to, we can evaluate the existing lighting and come up with photometrics.
Peter, in this instance, this is a lot that the public won't be going to. So it's really the only lighting that would be needed at all would be for security purposes and that's really what the applicant would be comfortable with. It's not really that the board needs to, you know, we're not for public safety or anything like that, so.
Strictly looking for handholding. Thank you.
All right, thanks Lisa. Anything else Peter?
No.
All right, Ben?
No, nothing.
Nicole?
No, nothing.
Rocco?
Uh, nothing from me, thank you.
Bob?
Uh, nothing from me.
And Joan?
Nothing from me, thank you.
Same here, my only comment is, it's great without the additional lighting. If it's not needed, then that'll help light spillage to the neighbor, et cetera. So, ready for motions.
I move that the planning board hereby determine that the Duchess Dodge Inventory Parking amended site plan would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment and that no environmental impact statement will be required for reasons set forth in the seeker negative declaration for the enlisted action dated September 17th, 2020.
Second. Moved and seconded for seeker, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for the Duchess Dodge Inventory Parking amended site plan application to be implemented into two phases subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning boards and those received from town departments and agencies and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of but not limited to one through three.
Second. Moved and seconded to grant conditional, called, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. All right, thanks Bill.
Thank you, have a good night.
Next up is Mercury Grand Hotel renovation. Been here a couple of times, who's here for this one?
I am, good evening, my name is Patricia Turner and I'm from Sports Architecture.
Okay.
I have to apologize, I do not have a camera, but I'd like to share my screen and just go over.
Sure.
The project.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
It's gone through a couple of additions.
Yes, so, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, our client is, is submitting an amendment to a previously approved site plan approval, which was granted in 2015 and then modified again in 2017. And it's to address a stop work order issued in February of this year. So what we submitted were the amendments and we bubbled for clarity on our drawings, the changes that, that we're proposing. On the site plan, we've shown a proposed concrete patio located on the east side of the building to replace an existing brick patio. We've also included a grease interceptor, which was required by the town water and sewer department. We, we are also showing a proposed exterior pool ramp and revisions to the pool fence and, a pool fence footprint, which will accommodate the pool ramp. And we've shown on this plan an existing catch basin, which was not previously shown. So we've just updated the plan to show that. We've also submitted a, some detail sheets showing revisions to the pool fence. We omitted, we omitted a couple of details that we had previously submitted, one being a privacy wood fence that was going to be located at the rear of the patio and also a dumpster brick enclosure, which we are no longer proposing because it creates a, it would not, it could not be used because it wouldn't achieve flood plain compliance. We also submitted, for your review, a small revision to the lighting plan. We showed some lighting, building mounted lighting to help illuminate the ramp, the proposed ramp for safety issues.
Okay.
And then, we submitted revisions to the landscape plan and provided a new material list for that. In addition to, to this, we showed on our drawings the water courseway boundary that was defined by Michael Nowicki of Ecological Solutions. And he's defined it as the top of the Casper Creek bank. And in addition to this work that's shown, the owner is also here, his name is Sam Patel and he will be doing some work to the existing pool, some maintenance work to that, which will include painting of the pool interior, addition of anti-intrapin drains, depth markers, underwater lighting and some repairs to the pool decking area, coping, et cetera. And it's important to note that the, I'm sorry, my computer is lagging a little bit. Okay. The exterior patio here, the shaded gray area is within the water courseway boundary. It's 825 square feet of area that is on there. The new patio is replacing an older patio that was there, a brick patio. And it's, they're approximately the same size, I think this one is slightly smaller if I recall. So those are the proposed changes, amendments. And I'd also like to state that Larry Paggi from Paggi Engineering is here as, as well.
All right. Thanks. Go to Eric for recommendation?
Sure. Let's see, I would agree with Patricia, the, the site plan elements proposed for amendment are relatively small. Perhaps the, the only issue really would be the wetland encroachment that occurred and has been remediated. Our wetland consultant took a look at the application to verify the information. Maybe I'll, I don't think, it's Carol Mapp, are you on the call today? I don't think that she is.
Yeah, I was wondering if she was myself, we have her.
Yeah, but her, her review is pretty straightforward, which you have. Basically, it indicated that they just need to account for it on the current plans a little more adequately and her initial, and quantify it to ensure that it's below the threshold for an aquatic resource permit. So with, with that, and then the other thing would be to put the amendments in context of the orig, of the existing approved plan with the full set. So with that, we're recommending the board conduct the public here, open and close the public hearing. It is a type two action for seeker. Any aquatic resource issues can be handled under the aquatic resource permit if one is required, which may not be the case, subject to conditions. And recommend that the planning board grant a conditioned approval if it's comfortable. I will mention, Patricia, you mentioned that, I didn't know this, that, that one of the eliminated details was a former fence by the patio. One of the comments of Aspen Consulting was that they recommended that the applicant consider some kind of a barrier in between the patio and the drop off to the creek. So you might want to consider that as, as one of your conditions.
We, I did see that on, on her memo, or letter rather. The only concern is that if we were to put something there, it would, it would be in the flood plain and it would act as a barrier in case of flooding. So I don't know if it's, if it's practical to put something like that back there.
Patricia, it may not even be just a matter of practicality, I don't know if that would be allowed. It may even be floodway. So I don't know if it would be allowed in the floodways. So, but we, we can look at all of that and dress, address that in writing with responses.
Yeah, that could be in a conditional and discuss it, make sure Carol's in agreement as well. All right. Uh, let's see, is there anything, Don, you want to weigh in from an engineering standpoint?
Again, we don't have much, but we're just looking for more, more sheets to be in the plan set because there's, you know, there's making a reference to a lot of other ones and we just think it would be wise to have a lot of the other sheets that were in the original pro will in this plan set, set. Other than that, not much, thank you.
All right, thanks Don. This is on for public hearings, so I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Anyone on the call tonight wish to comment on this project? Motion passes seven to zero. Anyone on the call tonight wish to comment on this project for Mercury Grand Hotel?
Star six if you're on the phone to unmute yourself, star nine to raise your hand. I'm not seeing anybody. Just trying to speak. Yep, it's been here a couple times, so. I'm not.
Alright, seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Let's go around the board for comments, start with Joan.
I have no comments, thank you.
Bob?
Nothing from me again, thanks.
Rocco?
Nothing here, thank you.
Nicole?
Yeah, the, in the letter that we received from the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development, they had asked whether or not it would be possible to get some electric vehicle charging stations and I was just wondering whether or not that's something that the owner of this hotel was thinking about or not.
No, we're doing very limited work to the parking lot. It's an existing parking lot. We're striping and sealing it. So no, the owner does not have any intention of doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Your work.
Alright, Ben? Yeah, you mentioned the dumpster area. What are you doing with that?
Originally, we had had a brick enclosure around it and it was deemed in the floodway, so we are proposing screening it with a chain link fence, raising the bottom of the fence to allow any water so that it's six inches above grade to allow any water so that it doesn't act as an entrapment. So it will be enclosed, but it won't be a brick enclosure.
Okay, and one other thing, I'm a little confused. This was a Ramada, Best Western, Mercury Grand, and now it says Hudson Conference Center. Is this, are they affiliated with any chain hotels or who owns this place, basically is what I'm asking?
So the owner, I think Sam, is online as well. Sandeep, are you there? Yeah, maybe you could answer.
Yes, yeah. Hudson Conference Center is the owner of the property. That's the name of the company. And the chain name is the Holiday Inn that we are going with.
Okay, so now be a Holiday Inn, yep, great.
Yes, yes.
It's a franchise, I guess, so.
Yes, it is a franchise, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Ben. Peter?
Just one question, and that is the plantings that you have chosen for the Route nine, or Norway spruce, it's an unusual choice. And Norway spruce is generally implemented in areas that are buffered. Why the Norway spruce?
Go ahead.
Sorry, Patricia.
So we had had something different there. The owner planted the Norway spruce. So Sandeep, can you review how you came to that?
Yes, yeah. The Kent Countryside Nursery and Landscaping, they have, you know, two individuals. They, you know, they said they're good in the landscaping or, you know, this business. And they recommended these, the reason they gave, they said because it's on a Route nine, in the snow seasons, there'd be a lot of truck also going here and there. And also there is possibility of salt and other things, so you need something, they said that can, you know, withstand those kind of stress and doesn't die. And they recommended, you know, this one, that's how we went with it.
It's, you know, it's up to you, but you know, Norway spruce can grow 60 feet high and can spread, you know, 40 feet, 30 or 40 feet, which would totally hide your building from the road. I'm just saying, it's up to you.
We will keep cutting and maintaining it in that case. Yeah, your right comment, actually. If it goes that high, we'll continuously maintain it to yeah, certain levels, so property appearance stays on Route nine.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. That was my comment as well. You know, generally when you put street trees in there, it's more of a deciduous nature, so they won't outgrow the area and they can get into power lines and et cetera, so, you know, they could be a danger, so it's. My preference would be something different as well, but taking, looking at the county comments. But you say they're already planted, is that what the issue is?
Yes, they are already planted.
Okay, you're gonna have to do a lot of trimming, I would say, at some point.
Yeah, going forward when it grows, yeah. Right now they are small, yes, very small right now. I think six to seven feet right now.
The other question is for lighting. We're looking at lighting of, you know, 3,000 Kelvin or less is what we've been trying to do for lighting temperature. Do you recall what they are on this plan, Eric?
Yeah, the plan details identify them as 4,000 Kelvin.
4,000, hmm. Is there a way you could reduce that? I don't know if those lights are already installed or.
Sandeep, have those lights been installed or are they purchased?
Yeah, it's already been installed. The poles and lights.
Alright, we gotta make sure they're, they're not glaring and stuff, because these higher temperature lightings look very bright. Take a look at that.
Those lights are based on, I think, whatever that was in the last approval, those are the same lights.
Make sure they're shielded and such. Alright. Gets ready for a type two, type two motion?
I move that the planning board determine that the proposed activity is a type two action and is not subject to SEAKER review pursuant to six NYCRR 617 dot five C7 of the SEAKER regulations.
Second.
Moved and seconded for SEAKER, call to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for the Mercury Grand FKA Best Western Hotel renovation site plan and conditionally dismiss the aquatic resource permit application subject to the following. Respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of, not, inclusive of the following, one through nine D.
Does that include Carol looking at the, okay, Carol's letter. Alright. And I can't, is it seconded?
Have you done, Carol?
What's that?
Did you include the lighting in there as well?
And lighting, yeah, make sure the lighting, make sure the lighting is shielded properly for 4,000 K.
Carl, this is Eric. So the planning department's comments included conditions to restore the Route nine landscaping and to change the lighting. So am I, it sounds like your, the board's preference is not to have those conditions be part of the resolution, is that right?
Anybody on the board to consider otherwise? I think we're good with the, the lighting's already installed as long as we do a condition to make sure it's properly shielded.
Okay, then, just for the record, then, we'll take off planning department comment three A to restore the landscaping. We'll take that off and we'll also, and we'll take off four A on the lighting and use your comment regarding shielding.
Alright, thanks. Okay, seconded? Moved and seconded, call to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero.
Very good, thank you very much.
And the architecture, we already did the architecture for this a while back, so that still applies, right?
Correct.
Okay, take care.
Thank you.
It's good seeing all of you. You all look well, stay well, thank you.
We'll keep the light on for you.
Thank you, everybody.
It's been a while.
Thank you.
Good night, guys.
Thanks, good night.
We're still here, though. Next up, Logan Skrav crossing. I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to October 15, 2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. Alright, at this time, I move that we allow public comment on any other items on tonight's agenda. We ask that you please limit your comments to no more than three minutes and the planning board consider comments made during this portion of the meeting, but not respond to them directly during the meeting. Do I have a second? Moved and seconded, call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Is there anyone on the call that wish to comment on any other items on tonight's agenda?
You can use star six to unmute yourself if you're on the phone. Star nine to raise your hand. Not seeing anything.
Alright, I move we resume the meeting?
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Alright, at this point, we'll take a two minute break here in the room, but while Eastdale is setting up to present.
Alright, back in a couple minutes.